Thank you, council members. Who? Need to make sure everybody. Anybody have? We good? Is it better?
Should be there.
Hello? Nope. Hello? Did it work that time? Oh, yay. Okay. Council members present and establishing a forum are council members Fulture, Kenny, Hanford, Gamble, and Scarborough.
Councilor again, would you leave some butch?
I'm glad to be in the United States of America. To the Republic with its hands. One nation, one dot, indivisible, with liberty and liberty itself.
Thank you. The next section on tonight's meeting is the public comment section. This time, excuse me, this time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe. Accepting quasi judicial matters subject to a public hearing, three minutes will be allowed for speaker. If you're attending the meeting virtually, using the link or the number provided above, please indicate that you would like to speak by clicking raise hand. And we will call on you at the appropriate time. If you're joining by phone, dial nine, star nine to raise hand. So I got, is there anyone that's scheduled to speak, sign up to speak tonight? Is there anyone in the public that would like to address the council this evening? Okay. Thank you. All right, next order of business is council member reports. We'll start off with the council member gamble. Okay. Thank you. Councilor Fulture.
There we go. Last night, the LTAC did meet, and so we'll have our recommendations ready for you.
Thank you. Councilor Scarborough. Okay. I have nothing to report. Councilor Kenny.
Last Thursday. I attended the superintendent interview for the school district, and that was very interesting. Mayor Thomas was part of that panel and was really interested in listening to the three candidates. And I think you probably have all heard that they selected Sean Woodward as the new Monroe School District Superintendent. So he will begin, I believe, July 1st. But that was very interesting, and there were a lot of community folks there. And also, I wanted to just mention that in your email, council members and mayor, there is an email from Teresa Willard regarding design standards for Monroe. She is a concerned citizen regarding historic preservation in Monroe. And you have that email. She just sent it tonight. She was hoping to be here, but she had a conflict. So just wanted, for the record, to let you know that that email is, is waiting for you to read. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor Administrator, administrator reports.
Thank you. For the extended agenda for next Tuesday, the 7th, we will have a public safety committee meeting starting at 6:00 PM. That will include electing a chair, going through the police department's 2023 goals, and then legislative update. For the regular study session, then, starting at 7:00 PM, that will be the joint meeting with the Planning Commission to talk more about the comprehensive plan, along with the regular reports for that evening's meeting. And that's it. The meeting, I think if you go to the next slide, I've got all the meeting cancellations that are coming, unless anybody had anything for the extended agenda. No? Okay. So just a couple of announcements, on February the 3rd, that's this coming Friday, the community court is going to have its first graduation. And there has been an invitation that was extended to the council from the court. So if anybody's able to make that meeting at 10:00 AM, we will see our first graduates from our community court. On February 14th, that meeting will be canceled. We have a number of council members who will be attending the AWC Action Days down in Olympia. And then on the 21st, since the 14th is canceled, we're going to change that meeting from a study session to a business meeting. So we'll have two business meetings in a row, one on the 21st and one on the 28th. We are tracking a number of bills that have been scheduled for public hearing in the state legislature. I've just listed a few of those. We're having weekly meetings with our lobbyists, Luke Esser and Jim Hendrick, to cover these bills and then to talk about those that are consistent with the city council's adopted legislative priorities. But just to keep you apprised of what's happening, things are, are moving along. The cutoff for bills moving out of their house of origin is going to be the Friday after we get back from Olympia. So I think that's the 18th, Friday, the 18th. But the bills that we're currently tracking, House Bill 1110 and Senate Bill 5190, both those bills are focused on increasing missing metal housing in single-family residential zones. That bill would allow both fourplexes and six plus plexes in those zones, and we're keeping an eye on that one. House Bill 1012 is an extreme heat for utility shut offs. It would prohibit the city from shutting off utilities during what are defined as extreme heat events. There's some questions from cities around the state about how extreme heat is defined. It's different in Western Washington than in Eastern Washington potentially. Heat indexes are different than actual temperatures, so I think there's still a lot of details to be worked out with that particular bill. House Bill 1363 and Senate Bill 5533 are both related to vehicle pursuits. More conversation about those with the Public Safety Committee at next Tuesday's meeting. The chief will give an update on both those bills in more detail. House Bill 1468, a lot of discussion around deferring impact fees again. If council members recall back during the recession, there was a push to allow deferrals of impact fees to certificate of occupancy instead of being due at the time of permit. So we're continuing to watch that just because it would have an impact, obviously, on the way that we collect impact fees if that bill were to pass. And then finally, this one is really interesting. Senate Bill 5514 would prohibit right turns on red within 1,000 feet of a school, library, hospital, senior center, and park facilities. Exactly. It's supposed to be high-traffic pedestrian, pedestrian areas. So they must be experiencing, you know, difficulties, I imagine, in urban areas particularly. But this would affect practically every signalized intersection we have in Monroe. So if you imagine how traffic is now without a right turn on red, how that might affect us. So we are watching this bill very closely, and I believe that we've already, for the public hearing, weighed in as a con, you know, against this bill just because of its impact to a rural area like Monroe or semi-rural area like Monroe. So those are the bills we're currently tracking. If there are others that the council is interested in and would like an update on at future meetings, just please feel free to give me a call and happy to provide additional information. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, council, councilor Scarborough?
Yeah, there's a, I heard there's a bill in that the they want to allow felons to vote online from jail. Might check on that one. I did text Carolyn. And she said, yeah, there, but there's a she said even the lead women are against it or somebody, but still, I heard that there's an entity in Olympia that wanted that bill. We want to check on that.
Okay. I will do that for you.
Is that all? Yep.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Knight. Next item on the agenda is under discussion items, 2024 to 2044 Conference of Plan Update Introduction with Ms. Turlo.
Turles are low. Turtle.
House.
Wait, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to give just a quick introduction. As, as council probably knows, we are currently in the process of doing a state mandated comprehensive plan update. And we have a consultant team that we have hired that's been doing a lot of work on a lot of background information related to public works, facility plans. And we're moving into the process where we're going to be addressing the, the land use element and, and other elements of the comprehensive plan. So we wanted to come back to council and, and some of the information you may have seen, because it kind of gives a framework of, of all the plans that, that the city has that we operate under and that we have to incorporate elements of it into our comprehensive plan. And also some information that, that will, will initiate with some new pieces that will be in the COT plan that aren't in the current. And this sort of tees up the, the meeting that will have the Joint Planning Commission City Council meeting, where the consultants will actually be here and they'll be presenting some of the information that they've been working on. And they'll talk about the engagement plan and give a, give an introduction to what we refer to as an equity assessment, which is a new, is a new piece for the comprehensive plan. So with that, I will turn it over to Planning Manager Turlo to talk about COT plan update and regulatory review.
Yeah, so thank you. I think all of you have been through one round of comprehensive planning, yes, 2015, no? Okay, I have a newbie, very excited. All right, so before I get into the presentation, I just wanted to remind you, in your packets this evening, the piece that I really wanted you to focus on is page four of your packet, and that includes the initial population and employment target, or excuse me, allocations that we have already been assigned. This is a process that I'll get into it in the, in my presentation. But basically, Snohomish County is the authority that works with all the cities through Snohomish County tomorrow. These numbers were adopted, so I'm going to run through this just really quickly. By 2044, Monroe needs to accommodate 24,320 people approximately. And this is important because our, based on the Buildable Lands Report, which says how much vacant land we have, how much residential, commercial we can develop, according to that document, which is one of our inputs, we can only accommodate 23,673 people. So we're going to have to look at our land use and make some decisions on what needs to change. This is also true for the employment figure. By 2044, we need to accommodate approximately 12,420 people. And according to the Buildable Lands Report, again, we have enough land capacity to accommodate closer to 11,705. So this will be important as we move forward because we have certain designations that turn into zoning and some changes are going to be necessary. Next slide. So planning in Monroe is not new. We've actually been doing it since 1963, which is, I think, pretty exciting. In 1980, Snohomish County, which is the, the closest one in your picture on the left, that plan was actually written by Snohomish County and adopted by the city of Monroe by resolution. It has, I would say, the heart of Monroe in the plan with some specific land use designations, a lot of policies. Then in 1994, the city adopted its first GMA compliance comprehensive plan, which was updated a couple of times, but you've been through two major, the city has been through two major updates. The first was in 2005, which was 2005 through 2025. And then the last one was 2015. The ending period is 2035. Then on the right picture, it's just a copy of some of our subarea plans. We have three that you may or may not know about. The first one is called the North Area Plan, and that was developed when the city is looking at expanding basically up the hill. And it was for two areas considered Milwaukee Hill and Chain Lake Road, which are both annexed already. But it talked about how that area should develop. The second plan was adopted in 2004, and that was the North Kelsey overlay, which is still in our comprehensive plan as well as in the development standards. And then finally, in 2009, there was a downtown master plan, and that is also incorporated into both the current comprehensive plan and our zoning regulations. Next slide. So I just wanted to give you an overview of these original plans. I just think it's, it's so interesting. The populations that we were looking at, the first GMA compliant again was 1994. The data that was used for this was actually from 1992. And you can see in the slide that we are estimated population was supposed to be 8,620, and we were actually over 17,000. A piece of this that I wasn't able to completely tie out is that the numbers, some of the numbers did not include the population of the Department of Corrections. Some of the numbers do, so that could account for the big swing. The housing, to me, is also interesting. We superseded our target by five or 2,000, over 2,000, and employment by 3,000 jobs. This being said, it's comprehensive plan is kind of interesting because you hold your corporate limits constant, and it only gets updated on these big cycles. So you could also see, this could also be accounting for various annexations during that time period. Next slide. Do you have a question?
Councilor Scarborough.
On your page two figures. Do they include the gated community on the hill?
Yeah, so, and in this one, that plan actually stated in the document itself that it did not include the Department of Corrections population in the, the 1990 city population. The piece that I couldn't figure out, though, is did they include that population for the expected total population by 2012?
Yes. He's talking about, if I'm wrong, he's talking about PDF page two, which was the original numbers that you gave us when you started your presentation. Of the, the packet, yeah, just keep going back. Oh, it's the numbers you read us about what to expect in 2044?
Oh, yes.
Our presentation of the page two.
Got it. Sorry, mine is page four. Yeah. So, so our numbers, all current numbers do include the Department of Corrections population, and we do understand that fluctuates. I did go back and the 2005 documents specifically, it included the information from a population, but as you're looking for the total number of housing units, it excluded needing to house that group of individuals. So we, this plan, we will try to articulate how that population is incorporated and in what pieces.
Okay, I'm trying to extrapolate here to see if we are if this approximately 2,000 people, I think, is what we think about when it's up there. So in these numbers, that 2,000 reflected on the bottom number and the top number. And if we took it out of the top number, are we closer to complying with what's needed as far as jobs and housing? Because the housing and the jobs wouldn't reflect that 2,000 people, you know what I mean?
Yeah. In 2005, I can accurately say, because I've worked on that document, that we, we did distinguish for the total population, it included the Department of Corrections population. But when we were looking at the numbers for employment and housing, we excluded them. So I will make sure Director Bailey is making a note right now, so we'll make sure we bring that forward.
You good? It's good too.
All right, so the next slide. Thank you. The 2005 Plan Update, I just wanted to highlight the big things in this one is we actually expanded our urban growth area to the, the northwest corner, all of Roosevelt Ridge, the current woodlands. That was all incorporated to our urban growth area back in 2005. And then again, I've already talked about a little bit, but this is the first time you see the North Kelsey overlay in the land use designation, and that trickled down to our zoning code. Again, of interest is the population that we were looking at, and I got as close as I could with the 2020 census because it's not 2025 yet, so I just think it's interesting. Next slide. And I will say, after tonight's presentation, we will make this available, email it out, or I'll work with city clerk, Winkoff, to figure out how to get it to you and make it available for the public. All right, the 2015 is the most recent update. This one, there was a lot of conversation about how to accommodate jobs. The city did need to increase the amount of housing, but there was a larger focus on employment. And so some of the big changes included the mixed use, there was a higher intensity of mixed use along Main Street. And then the hospital district was also developed during this plan, as well as the tourist commercial designation, which we've had a lot of experience with the last couple of meetings. And then also, again, showing you what the population was at the time. I put 2013 in print because that was the actual numbers that were used for the 2015 plan. And then again, we're looking at the targets for, or excuse me, allocations for 2035. Those are also reflected in the agenda bill. So we're moving the goalposts, basically, our 20-year planning horizon is moving from 2035 to 2044, which I'm about to get into with the Growth Management Act. Next slide, please. Okay, so in Washington State, we have the Growth Management Act. It was passed back in the 1990s, and it's considered a top-down, bottom-up regulations. The state sets the high bar. These are the policies. These are the goals we're trying to achieve. But at the end of the day, each local jurisdiction that is required to do comprehensive planning, they adopt their own plan. The only caveat to that is that the counties have the authority to amend your urban growth area, but we should be working in coordination, which we do through Snohomish County tomorrow. So it's building blocks. So the Growth Management Act is at the bottom. Next up, we are required to comply or be consistent with the multi-county planning policies. For us, that's the Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050, and there's also a regional transportation plan. So when we're doing our update, we have to make sure that we're consistent with that plan as well. Then building on that, there's the Snohomish County-wide planning policies. Those are specific for Snohomish County and all of its cities. And so each of these plans is building on the one below. That plan was significantly modified back in 2021, and it was done for consistency with Vision, Vision 2050. Then next up is what we're getting ready to do or already started, and that is our own comprehensive plan. And this really sets the stage for the city. Everything you're talking about, employment, housing, what kind of housing, to some extent, the design guidelines that you mentioned, that was part of a downtown plan, so we have that included. Part of that, what's our transportation system like? What's our level of service standards? Do we have enough capacity at our wastewater treatment plant? Are we complying with stormwater regulations? So this really sets the stage for all of our development regulations, which are in the municipal code, which is the next step up on our pyramid. And then finally, projects that come in, and that, that is local development. It could be a public works project. It could be a project we're looking for funding. Was it included in the, the city's plan? Did we include it in some instances, not necessarily in the countywide plan, but definitely in PSRCs? Because they get a lot of the federal funding and they distribute it. So really important, our plan needs to be certified by the Puget Sound Regional Council so we can continue to receive grant funding. Any questions? Okay, it's a lot. I sent you links so you can digest and feel free to call me or email me anytime. Next slide, please. All right, so getting specifically into the act, it's Revised Code of Washington, Chapter 3670A. And the only thing I want to show on this slide really is that last year, the state changed the deadline. They've kind of, they changed it over time. Some years, it's an eight-year review. Some years, it's a 10-year review. We're now back to a 10-year review cycle. This plan must be adopted, or our updates must be adopted by December 31st, 2024, so the end of next year. And then, I can't really tell, but the orange, the, basically the Puget Sound region, we're all on the same timeline, we're the first to go through and, and get our plans updated. Next slide. This is just a graphic of the GMA policies. And again, I've sent you a bunch of links, but it's trying to figure out, urban growth is supposed to go in cities and areas that have the infrastructure, the water, sewer, utilities. The Growth Management Act was adopted for many reasons, but part of it was to try to keep housing from continuing to encroach in resource areas, forest land, farms, natural resources. It also is talking about how's our transportation system. Now, I hear a lot about Finish 522 and US2, and Monroe is unique because it's at the intersection of three state routes. Economic development, property rights. When we're talking about changing land use, we also need to contemplate, you know, how's this impacting the community, the property owners? So just a big graphic. And then the other piece is also the Shoreline Management Act. It is a component. It's a standalone, but also a component of the Growth Management Act, and it is to protect the shorelines of the state, which we have the Sky Comish. Next slide, thank you. So our plan, our existing plans are actually, I think, quite, quite awesome in the city of Monroe. The required elements, again, are land use, housing, capital facilities. Capital facilities are, again, the sewer system, the water system, stormwater. There are facilities that the, the city of Monroe basically provides. Utilities, think more like your energy, Puget Sound, Puget Sound Energy, Comcast, your phone services. And we have to work with them, so we reach out and say, what are your plans for the next 20 years? Transportation is a big one as well. Under the optional, Monroe has already been doing economic development. It was incorporated in the 1994 plan. So we've already been thinking, how are we going to bring jobs to Monroe? Are we working on a housing, a balance of housing and employment so people don't have to travel far to go to work? We've incorporated a parks and recreation element since 1994 as well. And then, as I went over earlier, we do have the three subarea plans, which have been fully integrated into our comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. Okay. These building blocks again, so GMA, now we're working on Puget Sound Regional Council. The big changes that occurred. The last plan was Vision 2040. It was updated to Vision 2050 back in 2021. And it really, it's building on that Vision 2040, but some big changes occurred. And it really, it's building on that Vision twenty, twenty forty, but some big changes occurred. There's a very large focus on equity and inclusion. And so they're, they're asking us to look at how are our policies potentially displacing people and how are we mitigating that? So that's one big change that this new plan that we're working on will need to address. I think the other very significant change was the regional geographies. There is an impetus now to put all development and growth around all of these major transportation improvements, specifically light rail and the Bus Rapid Transit System. The city of Monroe is considered a city and town, and just to kind of give you a comparison. For that new geography, they're calling it high-capacity transit communities. That group for Snohomish County, that collection of cities is supposed to accommodate fifty percent of the population growth and thirty percent of the employment between twenty thirty-five and twenty, well, technically now, in twenty forty-four. For cities like Monroe, again, we're in that cities and town geography. We're only to accommodate, still not only, but we're supposed to accommodate nine and a half percent of the population growth in Snohomish County and eight percent of the employment. So you can see they're really putting a focus on light rail because there's so much investment going into those systems. Next slide. Oh, before I forget, important on the, the Vision twenty fifty. The other pieces that are new are climate change, which is something that the focus that they're asking us to address is really resiliency. So how, how does the city of Monroe come back from a major storm event? Are, is our treatment plant going to be impacted, which I'm very glad I'm here, as opposed to some cities that have their treatment facility in a floodway or on a shoreline. How you recover is going to be different. The other component of climate change that we're being asked to at least touch on is trying to advance the Puget Sound region, or the Puget Sound Clean Air, Air in, Air Agencies. Targets for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So this will be new for the city of Monroe. We've not tackled this before. And then there's a lot of housing, which I kind of touched on at your last meeting, talking about the countywide planning policy HO five. And our new requirement to establish allocations based on income level. Next slide. For the countywide planning policies, it generally is been updated for consistency with Vision twenty fifty. The, the biggest piece or the biggest change from my perspective during this, and this one is they have created, created a criteria, so you can actually establish a county center. This is new. And I think the, the hope for that is that you could get additional funding to support infrastructure. That's a big component of that. Another piece of both the Vision twenty fifty and the countywide is increased coordination with our federally recognized tribal partners. So we'll do, we'll be doing more outreach on that as well. And I did send a link, and it's also included in your packet, but the countywide planning policies. This is also where those initial targets that are in your agenda bill, they're located in Appendix I of the countywide planning policies. Next slide. So we don't work in a vacuum, and there's a lot of different pieces that go into our own locally adopted plan. And so I wanted just to provide you an overview of the other documents that impact what we can and cannot do, and things that we need to think about as we're moving forward. Vision twenty fifty was adopted in October of twenty twenty. The Snohomish County planning, county, countywide planning policies were adopted in September of twenty twenty one. The Buildable Lands Report, which tells us what kind of capacity we have left to develop, was adopted in September of twenty twenty one. The twenty forty-four initial allocations were adopted in February of twenty twenty-two, and that's also in the countywide planning policies. The one that's challenging right now for all of us is the twenty twenty census data. It's supposed to be distributed to the Washington State Office of Financial Management, and that some of the detailed information is still not available, and it has an impact on our housing allocations. So as I mentioned last week, we won't have good information from Snohomish County until, it sounds like the middle of March now. So we're still waiting on some of the census data. And then items six through ten, this is what we're talking about tonight. This is the comp plan. It's our GMA compliance. So one of the things that our consultant team has already done is they've gone through our development regulations, which primarily is Monroe Municipal Code Title twenty-two. Just the land use section, as well as the comp plan, and they've been highlighting the sections where, where we already have addressed it. We might need to modify it, or this is something that we need to include in this plan update. The comprehensive plan itself, that process is going to take us through next year. Environmental review, our plan will go through a a, well, slimmed down environmental impact statement. The scoping stage, which says, what are all the things that we need to assess? We'll be starting before, well, before the end of March of this year on our timeline. The legislative process, so the Planning Commission is your advisory board. They'll be digging into all the proposed plans and making a recommendation to you on what they believe we've accomplished and how to meet all these new allocations for population, employment, and housing. My suspicion is we will have a few more joint meetings between the two bodies, so you can have conversation. And then public participation, that will be happening throughout this plan. And as Lance mentioned, our consultant team will give you an overview of the engagement plan at your meeting next week. Next slide. So the big stuff for our plan update. Number one, from my perspective, is this plan needs to use a filter of Imagine Monroe. That was adopted earlier, and that really sets the stage of what this community wants to become. The next thing is, we are, as I mentioned earlier, being asked to really work with social justice and an equity. And I just kind of pulled out, this is from these are pieces from both the PSRC as well as the Growth Management Act, and it says, identify local policies and regulations that result in racially disparate impacts, and identify local policies that address the issues and begin to undo disparate impacts, displacement and exclusion. So this is brand new for our community. It's something new for a lot of cities in Washington State. We do have an equity audit that's underway already by the consultant team, and that will help us figure out, alright, well, this is how we've always done it. Does that work? Do we need to make changes? I'm sure it's going to be a great conversation starter for all. So the next one is housing, and Anita's come before you multiple times about middle housing. That will need to be incorporated along with providing housing for all economic levels. Next slide. The next ones are, the big one again, how are we going to accommodate the population and employment allocations that we have been given based on our understanding of what is available? Do we need to change zoning districts? Do we need to increase height limits? There's so many different ways that you can address this. That's going to be a major component of this project. The consultant team will be doing different models for your consideration. At the end of the day, we'll look for something that's preferred, the preferred alternative. And then when we're looking at all these changes to land use, how are we going to serve it with water? Is our wastewater treatment plant, does it have the capacity to accommodate all these additional people? That is a significant piece of this project. I think it was like half of the budget is dedicated to updating these utility plans. And then finally, as I've already mentioned, tackling climate change and resiliency. Next slide. Thank you. So just, this is a highlight of every element that is currently in the comprehensive plan. We're going to be updating everything from the general, general policy plan, the land use element, the transportation, capital facilities and utilities. Next slide. Not going to read this for you. Housing element, shoreline, we need to make sure that we're consistent with any modifications that the state has given us for the Shoreline Management Act. For the Parks Plan, it's kind of nice, because you just updated a brand-new Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. The bigger document needs to incorporate that. Do we need to look at any changes that came out of that new plan? And it will become an appendices for this twenty twenty-four, twenty forty-four document. Economic development is another one that we're looking at. The current plan really looks at ideas that are actually older than twenty fifteen, as the adventure starts here. Is that still appropriate for Monroe? So we'll be tackling that as well. Next slide. Then I want to introduce you to the full team. So Meg actually was the consultant team that did the pros plan, so they have experience working in Monroe. They've kind of got a head start on the things, some of our expectations. CAI also has already worked for the city of Monroe. They're the economic group, and they also do part of the outreach. Kenny Jenkins, we hired them recently to do an engineering report for the wastewater treatment plant. So again, I feel like we're kind of ahead of the game, because some of these companies already know what we have and some of our own expectations. BHC is another company that we have worked for, have, have worked with us in the past. They updated our sanitary sewer, water and stormwater plans back in two thousand fifteen. ESA will be doing the environmental analysis and reviewing our shoreline regulations. The Transpo Group will be doing our transportation analysis. And FSC, I think, is also part of the outreach team. Next slide. So what we've done in twenty twenty-two, the contract was signed to get Meg on board with all the sub consultants. They have a copy of the twenty fifteen plan. They've been doing traffic counts. That was, I think it was like August or September of last year, if you were crossing over the little bingy things on US two, that's traffic count. They've also been working on refining the timeline, which I have a slide in this presentation, but we'll ask for an actual calendar for you before next, your next week's meeting. The entire team had a kickoff with staff in August of last year. And then, as I've already mentioned, they've been auditing our documents. They've done the draft engagement plan. And they've started doing some initial mapping, and they've also created our webpage, which I will show you a sneak peek this evening. Next slide. So this is the webpage, and it will actually be connected to our own website. This is only a snippet. I wish I could get more down below. It has all of the background documents. It has our visions, or it has the Imagine Monroe vision statement. It has a timeline for the project. And by the end of this week, we will have it linked to our own website. We're going to do a little piece of information, kind of highlighting this one. So very exciting. And then finally, first click, thank you. This is kind of going over where we're going. This is the roadmap, and I apologize, I was thinking it would be a great infographic, but it's very busy, so we're going to break it up, and that's why I want to have a better calendar for you next week. So along the top, the header piece. Oh, sorry, yes, I forgot we broke it up. So what happened last year, I've already really gone over that, and that was working on the project website. It's the internal kickoff, starting to collect all of the background information. Doing some of the regulatory audits and the engagement plan. Next slide. Thank you. So the one piece that did need to get moved over a little bit is our interested parties outreach. That is actually going to happen in February. We were hoping to start a little sooner, but the timeline slid a little bit. The community kickoff, we are planning for the middle of March or the first of April. As soon as I coordinate the date, we're hoping to host it at, up at the high school. So as soon as I have that date, we will send out a save the date for all of you. And then we're going to have, the CAC is a oversight committee, and I think you talked to them.
Yeah, that, that was the idea where we're going to, we're going to have in members of different boards and commissions that will, that will be on, on that. And, and one of the, one of the, the thoughts on that is that it, it enables those members of the boards and the commissions to come back and provide regular updates as, as those boards and commissions are meeting. So that'll be, well, after our meeting with the, the consultants and, and the update and, and more discussion about the engagement plan. That will be the next step that we'll
And so that's, that's the middle of the document that says the CAC. That is the oversight group, yes.
Alright, Councilor Kate.
Thank you, Kate. This is fascinating. I just wanted to let you know for your community kickoff, just to maybe make a note that the school district spring break is the first week of April. So a lot of people will be out of town, just in FYI.
We're looking at the, I want to say it was the sixteenth, if that's the
Of April.
Of March.
Of March, yeah, that's perfect.
The backup date, I can't remember, but I did look at the school district calendar. It's not one of their vacations.
Excellent, thank you. Just wanted to make you aware of that.
Yeah, appreciate that, thank you. And then the next slide. Yes, it's a, we're trying to schedule it on a Thursday evening, trying to avoid planning commission, city council activities on Wednesdays. And then taking us all the way through fourth quarter of twenty twenty-four, when you start getting through the actual regulatory process. What I started talking about before I remembered we had cut the slide up, is that along the top, it talks about just the information gathering, the next arrow at the very top, which is somewhat hard to see, is the scoping. That's part of the environmental review process. Then we start working on the scenarios. So they, the consultant team has already built these models. They have the build, buildable lands data already in their system, and so we can play around with, well, maybe this is a good idea or a good area to increase density. Maybe we need to look at changing the designation from mixed use to full-on commercial in this other area. And so we can see how that is going to look for the community. Then Q one into twenty twenty-four, we're doing the first draft of the environmental impact statement, and that's, comes out and says, here are all these options that we're looking at. Here's the pros and cons for the built environment, the natural environment. And then typically, that's when we ask for a lot of feedback. What, what do you like? What don't you like? And then we respond to those comments, and at the end, you come out with a preferred alternative, which is what you will be adopting as the comprehensive plan by the end of next year. Next slide. Think. Yes, yeah, thanks. And you survived the presentation. Do you have any questions? Comments, curiosity?
No questions, comment? After reading through your packet for tonight, consider what you're doing and donking fast. And appreciate all the work it takes to go through all of this information and bring it all up to date, and then present it to us in layman terms at some point, so it's understandable. I, I realize that there's there's a hierarchy of somebody telling us what we're supposed to be doing, you know, it's Snohomish County, the state, Snohomish County to us. Really is. It's an amazing thing just to read and go, how do you keep track of it all? I, I commend you and failing our staff, and now this team that you told us about. I'm sure it's their job to put it together. It's your job to oversee, look over their shoulder and make sure that they're, they're doing what we need for Monroe, or that we're doing what they need for Snohomish County. Thank you very much.
Well, then it's ultimately your job to adopt it, too. It's ultimately your job to adopt it as well.
Okay.
I did have one question to ask, Kate. I'm sorry, Kate, if you mentioned it at the, at the very beginning, but the joint meeting is next Tuesday.
Correct.
And what is it that you're hoping council is going to provide as a part of that meeting? Is it just listing, or what, what is council's role in part of that?
Yeah, so next week's meeting is really an introduction for the consultant team. They will be providing you with more information. It's we're not expecting anything from you. This is part of the education process and giving you an overview of some of the draft documents. My suspicion is they will also be going over the website, doing a walkthrough with you as well. So no action necessary. Starting to beat information.
It, it's also an opportunity for It, it's also an opportunity for, um, discussion between the planning commission and the city and city council, um, about some of the particularly the, the presentation, uh, next, at, at, on next Tuesday will, will involve some of the new elements that, that, uh, we're, that we're doing. And Kate mentioned, uh, sort of touched on it, the, the equity and inclusion pieces, uh, that have come out of PSRC and, um, some of the, the data and analysis that'll go into that. So it's, it, um, we've asked them to, to focus on some of the pieces that maybe you haven't seen that, that aren't in our existing comp plan. And it, and it's new for everybody. It's, it's been kind of an interesting process to, to be in, um, sort of training sessions, honestly, with, with other cities as this has been presented, because it's, it's, um, it's, there's very few, there's very few cities that have adopt, that have those kinds of policies and have addressed those things and, and their comp plan. So it's kind of new territory for all of us. I think Meg has done a lot of work though, in this area and, and as we've worked with them, because it's been a little daunting of like, you know, I, I, it's, it's, you're trying to learn it and move forward in, in adoption and create these policies. And, and as we've worked with them, it's like, okay, they, they've got a pretty good handle on conceptually how you do, how you do these things. So it's, it's, um, we're glad to have them on board.
Yeah, I was going to add, I think, you know, one of the challenges that we're going to be faced with in this comprehensive plan, different than others. And Kate touched on it briefly is displacement. And so, you know, the area, for example, that is south of Main Street and, or excuse me, north of Main Street and, and west, um, of 179th, you know, is an area in the past where we've identified that for more dense development. But those are entry level homes for many people. They're, they're smaller homes. Not all of them are even sewered yet. Some of them are still on septic systems. And so if we, if we decide that we're going to do more dense development there, we're going to have to adopt these policies that address this displacement and this equity. So as Kate and Lance have said, there are, there are new requirements in this comp plan update that none of the three of us, even with the level of experience we've had over the last 25 or 30 years, we've never had to tackle these. So it's going to be, I think, a learning experience for all of us as we're going through this. It's just, how do we, how do we balance that? I've had a couple of conversations, um, with individuals that are in the development community and they're saying, what is Monroe going to do? You're, you're out of lands. You're out of buildable lots. You only have so many buildable lots left. Are you going to expand the urban growth area? And of course, that's not even on the table. There's, Snohomish County has, has two proposals to expand the UGA. We've talked about those in the past. One is on the west end, you know, west of tr- tractor supply. And then a small portion, you know, this kind of north of the city limits. But that, that isn't really going to accommodate all of the population and, and employment that we're going to be required to take on. And so definitely a conversation around how are we going to be growing upwards? Kate mentioned, you know, having to change the development regulations in order to allow greater height. But, you know, these are, these are big issues. And as Kate said, with the timeline, we really have, you know, the next two years, and it's going to go by fast to, you know, have these conversations with the planning commission and, and decide, you know, what, what does that future look like for us? Where, where is that population going to go? Um, and, you know, how dense is that development going to be? It's there at the state legislature that the, the density issue is big. It's interesting to me because in the last comp plan update, it was all about economic development because we were in a recession. And so the focus was on economic development. How are we going to help our business community? And of course, this comprehensive plan is all about affordable housing because we're in affordable housing crisis right now. So it's going to be about what, what are we doing to create that housing for all income levels? And some of that, you know, we talked about the bills in front of the state legislature. Those are going to impact this comprehensive plan in ways that we haven't even, we don't even know yet how that's going to happen. And we still have another legislative session to go through next year too, but the same issue. So, um, I think it's kind of like building the plane while you're flying it a little bit, um, is the situation that I think we feel in particularly with housing and all the focus on housing. But to your point, I think earlier, Councilmember Kenny and Scarborough, we have a really good team in place. And I'm, I'm grateful for both Lance and Kate and the Meg team and everybody else, because I think we've got the right group of people working on this plan. But certainly having council engaged in this conversation is going to make it easier for all of us. So appreciate your time this evening.
Councilmember Kenny.
I just wanted to say thank you also. It's a ton of work. Um, and also I was really pleased to hear the climate change and, uh, equity is included in the plan because I think the community would demand that. And it's already taken care of. So it's going to be really nice when people say, well, what about that? To say it's covered, it's in the plan. And I also was curious about, uh, the public engagement. I know we'll find out more next week. But I remember being part of a community, several community meetings for the last comp plan. Uh, all sorts of places like Park Place Middle School and different things and really working on this. And that public involvement is built into this new good. Because I think we have a lot of people that are really engaged in the community, maybe more so than ever, that will really want to jump in and be a part of it and, and contribute some ideas. So I'm looking forward to hearing about the, uh, public engagement piece.
Not, not to steal their thunder, but they, they will include, um, on the website, we will include surveying. I don't know if you visited us at the farmer's market last year, but we'll be out again. We'll be doing work. Um, part of the goal is we want to come to the community. So we, you will be seeing tents at different events, uh, trying to coordinate with the school district, um, the east, well, not so much the Easter, but the night out against crime. You will see us all over the community for the next two years.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Scarborough.
Yeah. I think it'll be interesting to see what the team has as an idea, a couple of things you've identified, Deb's identified here. His county won't let us move out. So they're forcing us to move up with affordable housing and housing. And in any event, whether we go up or we go out, how they plan to present to the state the need for transportation and or arteries in, through, out of Monroe. I mean, I my wife and I sit on our couch every morning, have coffee and watch the lights come from Sultan. And the amount of growth that's, that's moved up there in affordable housing, so they can go through here, down to jobs in Boffel and Everett, whatever. And it's, it's amazing. I mean, I can watch 30 cars coming this way and then a break because the light in Sultan has gone red for people to come on hand road opposite. And then when it's gone green again or something, another 20 or 30. And I mean, it goes from 5:30 in the morning until 7th and it's just, it's just amazing how much has grown up there. So that tells us how much has grown here because we don't sit and see what comes off the hills here. We come down to highway two to go that way, or go 522 and go that way. But it's, it's going to be, I'd like to see what they come up with and what kind of pressure we can put on legislation. If, if that is a good thing to put pressure on legislators to finish 522. And what pressure do we need to make two better between here and the trust? So I think, I think there's going to be some, some big issues that they'll have. And it'll be interesting to see what they come up with. So you might pick a layer here and say, that's a concern that I personally would have enough the whole thing. But still, a great job. We appreciate all you've done. And we see quite a job in the future.
Yeah, I think it's not just Sultan, but it's even Gold Bar.
Well, yeah.
I mean, and yeah.
You can't see because of the hill.
Yeah.
We gotta be, they're coming from somewhere up there.
I just have to tell you a crazy story. When I worked here the first time, uh, we, I lived in Linwood. And so I would do the reverse commute into Monroe. And this is before the first section of 522 was widened. And it was, um, let's see here, it was like 2000, 2001, and I was driving to work and I couldn't believe it because the cars, I saw people reading their newspaper as they're sitting in their car, trying to get headed, yeah, headed towards Bellevue and Kirkland. So I was here when that first group, that first section got expanded. And I'm like, oh, this will be awesome. They're going to start free flowing traffic again. By the time I left in 2008, it was back to watching people reading their newspaper while they're driving on 522 headed to the east side. To me, and I've worked for transit in between my stints here. And some of the conversations are, you cannot build your way out of the transportation situation. You have to think of it differently. So I think that's something that going to have to tackle as we're assessing this because people are wanting to come to Washington still. And we are in a great place of the country for jobs and it's beautiful. So.
I thought the same thing. Watching well, the country all to get, get to the elementary school and middle school. Finally, and then then into the high school. And I think you kind of got, we had for free, they got some spending and that's different.
Yeah.
It's a bottom line and then it goes, you know, it's a bottom line.
One of the things that, um, both the Growth Management Act and the Pugilist Regional, Regional Council are really trying to encourage is really working on that housing employment balance. How do you have people, um, create, create a situation where people can live and work in the same community? So you're not having to do all this driving. So that will also be part of the things that we are contemplating while we're doing this up late, update.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any further questions? Yeah, I remember one thing I was going to, uh, just ask. Excuse me, we've heard from the neighbors on 179th about traffic calming devices out, um, just east of the middle school. And, uh, so I, I think last week, Doc, we were going to be looking at that this coming winter. So just throwing that out there to we know when that's coming yet or?
I don't, but let me check.
Yeah, if you could just we check on that, that'd be great. We're 522. So the backs will probably do, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And there's no objection or adjourned?
See you next week.